So if anybody would like to join me, please bow your heads and we'll talk to God. Heavenly Father, thank you for this city. Thank you for the residents of this city. But most of all, Lord, thank you for this council, for the cooperation, for the working together, for the sense of pride that they have in their community and for their willingness to give of their time for the community. We pray that you'll be with us as we are decision making tonight and as we move forward in this new year. We just thank you, Lord, for your guidance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. We'll wait another minute or two. Okay, well, it is time, so let's begin. I call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take Will Cottie?
Mary Ann.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
McConnell.
Here.
Chad Kohler.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Tina Dunn.
Here.
Jacob Pucker.
Here.
And looking now for approval of our agenda for tonight.
I move that the agenda be adopted as planned.
A motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now we are looking at council meeting minutes of January 4th for the approval of those minutes.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the January 4th, 2024 regular council meeting.
Motion from Larry, seconded by Bob.
All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And I told you, Lori, it would be quick, and here we are.
Yes.
The pre-approved superintendent of Perry Public Schools, Lori Haven, is here to talk to us.
All right. Well, thank you so much for having me tonight here. I appreciate the support of the city, and it's great to check in. It's been a while since I've been here. I have a couple of handouts for you. I'll start on either side. As a teacher in me, everybody's passing at the same time. Tonight, I wanted to talk to you about the Perry Public Schools sinking fund proposal that is on the ballot for February 27th of this year. And I also then wanted to give an update of some professional learning that we've been doing in the district and how we might be looking to the city for some support as well as community support in general. So you may remember that in 2018, our voters considered and approved a sinking fund of 1.0 mil. That sinking fund is in place now, but expires at the end of 2024, so the end of this year. So we are running an informational campaign where we're asking voters to consider, and we want to make sure that we educate them so that they're able to make a decision that's based on the facts. So we are asking them to consider a sinking fund proposal on Tuesday of the election to fund district-wide improvements of our physical property. And so if approved, it would levy 1.0 mil, the same as the 2018 sinking fund, and it would do that over the next 10 years. And currently, with our tax property values, that would correlate to about $334,957 yearly that the district could put towards maintaining and replacing necessary pieces of our physical plant at Perry. So I wanted to talk just briefly about the difference between the different funding streams for us. So we have a general fund, and that's a combination of local, state, and federal resources. And the goal of the general fund is to support all the resources closest to educating our students. So the majority of that obviously would go to personnel, so it goes to support staff and professional staff, and then resources for our kids, what they're using in the classroom, technology, programming, things like that. The state of Michigan does not have a funding stream for maintenance and repair of physical property. They expect districts to provide that on their own some way or use their general funds. And so the sinking fund is one option to keep our general fund closest to kids by using that for personnel and for resources directly related to student learning. So the sinking fund can basically be used for most anything. If you flip the buildings over and shook them and things did not, whatever doesn't fall out typically is approved, approved expense of the sinking fund. That's the easiest way to think about it. In May of 2023, they did legally change the option for added a different way that you might use sinking funds, and that includes to provide student transportation. And so for us in Perry, we are interested in not only maintaining and replacing necessary pieces throughout our district, you know, items, mechanical, HVAC, things like that, but we also recognize that the aging buses over time do create a significant expense. And so it's great to think that that sinking could be a sinking fund expense and not be pulled from our general fund, again, that we want to keep closest to kids. So because of that, the language, when you look at it, you notice that it says, as you're reading, that it would not exceed 1 mil, but it says that, you know, Perry Public Schools shy of seeing counties in Michigan be increased by, and the Board of Education be authorized to levy not to exceed 1 mil. And the reason that it says increase is because the legal language has changed to include student transportation, where in the 2018 proposal, we were not allowed to include that. So it cannot be called a renewal because it's expanded and you can pay for different things. But it is the same 1 mil that we've asked voters for in the past in 2018. So basically, we have the 18 sinking fund that ends this year, at the end of 2024. If approved, this sinking fund proposal would go into effect in 2025 once that expires, so you don't have any overlap. The sinking fund is asking voters to consider that mileage for 1.0, which is the same as 2018. And it gives you on the one-page explanation, just information about how we might use the sinking fund dollars. We have a facility use plan that's been updated after our bond work that is mostly complete, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. But we're looking at security upgrades, infrastructure improvements such as continued door replacements, roof repairs, replacement of outside windows at the elementary school, emergency repairs if we happen to have a water main break or a major HVAC repair. Previously, we've used the 2018 sinking fund for boiler replacement when a boiler has gone bad. So a lot of those in-the-moment expenses that are costly but can be covered under that sinking fund umbrella. And then just ongoing replacement and upgrades to our playgrounds. So I also left with you a frequently asked question list. This is just typically questions that we hear. And again, I think some of the highlights are just that although the language indicates an increase, it is the same 1.0 mil, just expanded to include different expenditures, and that it is something that has been in place since 2018, so our property owners have been having this on their tax statements since that time. And then we have some, obviously, information about registering how to vote, but I bet you all already are aware of all of that, so we'll skip that part. Do you have any questions about the sinking fund proposal? All right, thanks. I did want to talk a little bit about the bond work since we're wrapping up, and one question that might come is, well, you had a bond in 2021, why would you need a sinking fund? But a sinking fund would help support the expenses as the bond work needs replacement or repair over time. So that sinking fund that is proposed would run for 10 years, so that would get us through a number of upgrades or replacements that we would need just over time from wear and tear and use within the district. Our livestock barn is officially all set, and our pigs come in within the next week or so, so we're very excited. And then the babies will start coming, which is always exciting. We have a live cam, which is amazing. I mean, well, mostly amazing to watch. We did purchase our bus lease out with the bond, so that we now own our buses. And we leased our buses many years ago when we were in deficit spending, when we were probably a little less than 5% fund balance as a last resort because our bus fleet had been past its useful life. And so we, which was necessary at that time, but then got us into the position where all of our 12 buses were new all at once, but then also coming of age at the same time, which can be very costly. The price of buses have gone up substantially. I think when I started in Perry, they were about $85,000, and now they're between $150 and $160, and they just keep climbing. I don't know, you know, where that ceiling will be, but... So we knew it would be important to be able to purchase those buses and get into some type of purchasing over time, where we buy one or two buses every other two to three years, so that we're not replacing a fleet all at once ever again. So just, and that's just being fiscally responsible and making sure that we can take care of the needs of the kids. We also were able to invest in music programs. Drew Barnhart, I know you're familiar with, and Debbie Dutcher, they do a fantastic job running our choral and band programs, and so we have provided some resources through the bond for them. We have new flooring throughout the high school and elementary school, and the middle school, of course, not because it's already beautiful, like there, we don't need any flooring there. I really would encourage you, if you have an opportunity, stop by. You could come during school hours. If you wanted to come outside of school hours, just let me know. The buildings really do look amazing. I'm so proud of just our kids enjoying those and our staff, and it really has made all the difference, being able to do some of those updating. We had a number of mechanical replacements, in particular with the high school, roof replacements. We, I'm sure if you've driven by, you've seen the pavement looks a lot better. It's not all cracked up. It's beautiful, as well as the sidewalks, a lot of repair and replacement. We expanded parking at the elementary, which has been amazing, just to get some of the cars off the side streets. That has been probably one of the favorites, just to be able to go to the elementary in the afternoon and find a parking spot is a miracle. And then also through the sinking fund, the 2018 sinking fund, we did replace that elementary playground. And so that's finding a lot of use, and we enjoy that community members use it outside of school, and our kids definitely benefit from it during the day. Any questions about that?
You were mentioning a security system.
Oh, yes.
Is that going to be at the high school and middle school?
So it would be security upgrade. So we actually are in the process. There's a lot of different grant funding around safety, security, and mental health. And so we have used a chunk of our Esser funds, which those expire in September of '24, and then also some of our mental health and school safety grant funds, I think that's 31AA, to replace all of our entry doors and our strikes with our FABs. So any entrance that's a FABbed entrance, where people go in and out during the day or outside of school hours, we replaced those with more reinforced aluminum doors. So we had bought those doors originally on quite a tight budget. And so what we have found over time, as we were constantly having to tighten everything down, you know, it's very easy to breach them. And so those have been actually replaced over Christmas break. We're just waiting for a few of those doors. What we're very interested in doing next is creating a secure entryway at the current middle school. And that would basically replace a window with a door and make that foyer locked all the time, and then the entryway would be through the middle school, the current middle school main office.
Oh, nice.
So, yeah, yep, so that would be great. We're going to also include some safety film. So it's a clear, that goes, it's a clear film that goes over glass, but it would be, in particular at the elementary, there's so many windows at that front area. So it would be, for example, the principal's office. I think Olivia Flores is in a kindergarten room that has large windows right across the front of the building. So we would put that film on all of those windows. And then the backside of the, of the elementary has very, very old windows, so we'd like to upgrade those into more secure windows and then do that same film on the backside of that.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And we, long term, we would love to rework the high school opening because that is very far away from the entrance, but that likely would take much more of an investment. You know, I'm probably, I would think, 10 million. I mean, probably we'd have spent a whole bond just on redesigning that piece because you would have to pull out all of that front area by the cafeteria and Mary Hewn's office in order to create that safe, secure space. So we're going to invest in some higher-end, more so than what we have now, cameras and reinforce those doors and wait for planning on how we're going to get that next phase done.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thanks. You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have one question.
Yeah, yeah.
Just curious, excuse me, curious what the new fences are by the daycare.
Oh, yes.
I live across the street. I'm going, but they put a fence there.
Yes, so we're in the process. That's a great question. So that was through an early childhood grant. We are in the process of expanding our preschool and daycare program, and so we needed more room for an infant toddler playground. And so that's going to expand over time, and we're going to be purchasing some pieces to put in there because the regular-sized playground is just a little too big, you know, for the 3 and under. There is one structure that's 2 through 12 and one that's 5 through 12, but it's a, they would be small fish in a big sea over there. So we're going to get them a little more confined and in a more manageable area.
Okay.
So, yeah, and so part of that expansion is based on community need. We always have a waitlist for infant and toddler childcare. Typically, there's 13 to 20 families who are waiting, who can't get in. And then in addition, we have a preschool program that's growing. And so that has led to us to plan for the realignment for the fall of '24. And so what we'll be doing is our elementary currently is K, it's pre-K through 4th grade. That building will turn to a pre-K 2 building, and so that will free up six classrooms to be pre-used as early childhood center areas. And so we're going to open up probably one to two infant toddler rooms in the fall and then also an additional preschool as demand allows for.
Do you have head start?
We have GSRP, so great start readiness.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yep. And so the majority of our families are, that GSRP program is free of charge, and then if people don't qualify for that threshold, then they're able to pay a small tuition.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, we definitely, that has been the point of need for us, and we feel strongly for sustainability and to encourage people to come to Perry, raise their families here, live in this great city, that we want to make sure that we're offering those opportunities because we feel strongly that once they get in the door, they likely would not leave. But when we're not able to provide childcare, they go into neighboring districts and programming and they, you know, make friends. And then, and then it's harder for them to leave to come back to their home school. So our goal is to really serve a community need and also sustain our community and hopefully continue to grow and get younger fam, you know, young families in who are willing to stay and grow with us.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Forgive me. Do you guys have like a master plan or something like I could read separately from this meeting? Like, I feel like you guys have a lot of great things going on.
Yeah, so I'm happy to provide, and I will get that to soon. She can, you could disseminate that. But we have strategic planning goals, and so I'm happy to share that. Yeah. Yep, so we, and that's, that's where this strategic plan really brought to the forefront this need to realign, because obviously, nobody loves change. So if we didn't think we had to do it, we likely wouldn't have. But we just have seen a continuing strong need to provide more space and opportunity at that elementary building. So our middle school currently is 5 through 8, and it will be transformed to an upper elementary. So we'll host grades 3 through 6. And then our high school, which is right now 9 through 12, will become a secondary building, and it will house the middle school as well as the high school. So we'll have 7th and 8th grade, they will be on the first floor. And I mean, we're, we are just very fortunate and blessed. Our facilities are beautiful. I mean, they really are amazing. They're kept in tip-top shape. We will be able to have our grades 9 through 12 on that top level, and then 7 and 8 will be on the ground floor. And then we'll have our shared staff, our Spanish, our health, you know, some of our elective teachers will place them closest to the stairwell so that kids can come up and down, but we'll keep some separation in between that middle school experience as well as the high school. So, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's obviously always tough to have change. We want to make sure that we're rebranding so that things are new and the middle schools that feel like a middle school, for example, that it really feels like an upper elementary, but you want to also keep the traditions of Perry High School and make sure the freshmen through seniors have those experiences and that the middle school kids have their own special experience that will not be high school.
Pretty high school.
Yeah, yes.
Give a little taste of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And right now, we have a lot of shared staff. So for example, if you take Spanish one, if you take geometry, if you're in advanced, you know, science course or math course, you're what, we have many 8th graders, probably 50 to 60, you know, almost most of the grade at one point or another, walking over to the high school to access. So I would say right now, they have less technical supervision as they come in, they key in, and they walk to a classroom. It could be upstairs, it could be downstairs. And so having them all under one roof will increase a lot of efficiencies and also, you know, really, we're building that school within a school.
Yeah. So... The band and music programs, they share the same facility though, don't they?
Yes, yeah, they do. And so we'll still, still begin band in 5th grade and, you know, choir the same in 6th grade and have the general music in 5th grade, 3 through 5. So a lot of that programming will remain the same, but we're hoping that it also will give an opportunity to continue to expand some of our programming because our shared teachers won't have to travel. We're trying to minimize the number of times that staff have to leave because it takes, you know, basically a half hour by the time it's all said and done, especially if you're coming from the elementary to come to this, you know, the campus where the middle school and high school are. So we're just looking for efficiencies and ways that we can serve kids a little differently.
Very good.
Yeah. And the last piece that I wanted to share is about the professional learning our staff has been engaged in. So we are part of something, an organization called the Future of Learning Council, and Perry started in that group about three years ago, and we have been going to a series of professional learning events, just hearing about, you know, how it's really a grassroots effort on how to continue to improve public education. And so we were connected with Dr. Leah McConaughey, and her expertise in particular is about authentic learning and transfer. And so our staff has been learning over this past year all about ways that you can engage kids differently, so that it's not your traditional lecture style, that kids are able to be fact-finders and look for information, that they can collaborate together, and that they can connect their learning to something authentic outside of the school environment. And so we've been working hard with staff, and by March 13th, they're each going to present one lesson, facilitate it within their classroom, where they're going to have some type of authentic transfer. And it was awesome last Friday, minus the bad weather, because we ended up having to change our plans a little bit, but we ended up having some virtual and some in-person, and we still had a great session, but really brainstorming with teachers. So how, how does that authentic transfer, what does it look like, who would it involve? And actually, the city council came up. So I'll give you a couple of quick examples of calls that you might be feeling or reaching, you know, people who might be reaching out to you. So for example, we have a language arts teacher at the high school. She's very interested in having her students look at the city of Perry and talk about planning for the future. What do you think, you know, what's the big industry in Perry? Do we think that's the way it's going to be? How do you encourage people to come? What do you think might be missing? Who might be the next business owners to come in? How might you provide a proposal for people to come to our town? And she was asking for authentic audience, and I said, well, gosh, we have a great one. And so, so it's really, kids need an audience, right? And, and when you create a big proposal, you spend a lot of time on it, and you turn it into a teacher who is grading it and turning it back, it doesn't go anywhere. It might be a great, you know, likely, it's a great body of work, it has innovative ideas, but no one else sees it. And so what we're trying to help students understand is what you're doing matters, you will impact the world. We need to connect them to different contexts so that they can expand and make it real for them, because who wants to do an assignment that doesn't go anywhere? You know, and so we're really looking for some of those connections. Another example was our PE teacher about, like, you know, doing some bow and arrow lessons, and he said, well, gosh, at first, we start by basically explaining all the safety rules, and it is so incredibly boring. Like, I'm bored and I'm teaching it, right? And we just don't know, you know, how can we make that look different? And so we, problem solved, he and the rest of his team about what would that look like? Could kids look on their own? You know, we are no longer the knowledge keepers. Kids could Google or look on Safari, and they can find pretty much anything they want. We really are guiding them, what's good, what is information that we believe is factual? What are you looking for so that you know that this likely is not factual? You know, it's not any longer, I mean, I will say, when I was in school, I went to school, I didn't have access to a computer, I didn't have access to the World Wide Web because it didn't exist. So when I went there and my teacher shared things with me, that was the only way I was going to get it. And so those days just don't exist anymore. So how do we adapt to that? So he came up with the students researching, what is bow and arrow safety, creating a pamphlet for a beginner, and then having, I think in Morris, there's an archery center, having that owner, you know, having him look at those pamphlets and then deciding what's, gosh, did you miss something? Having him critique them, give them back to the kids, and then possibly printing them once they're a finished product for new archery, you know, for people who are coming in who are new to archery, so that they know they have a real audience. So, yeah, so we're just looking for all kinds of opportunities, so I would expect that in the future, you might be easily tapped into.
Well, we'll look forward to that.
One thing for awareness, from a timing perspective, the city right now was, has embarked on developing an updated 10-year master plan.
Oh, great.
It's being worked on by the Planning Commission in conjunction with an outside contract group, and in the coming weeks to a couple of months, we'll have a draft of that that will be looking at the Planning Commission here in this council and ultimately will be made available to the public for their input. So there may be a...
Yeah, a strong connection there.
Connection.
Yeah. All right. Well, I want to again, thank you for your time tonight and very much for your support. I really enjoyed the partnership that we've been building, and we just hope to continue to build from it.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Lori. We really enjoyed hearing from you tonight. Thank you for coming. Thanks.
I don't believe we have any other pre-approved reports, so onto public comments, and I don't see anyone here for that. Shirley, do we have any communication?
I handed out our holiday schedule of the days that were closed. I think that's all that, that's it.
I do have just a few things. I've been in touch, as you all know, with Congresswoman Slotkin's aide Jeremy Blatt, and he and I have talked a couple times this week by email. And he sent me a list of possible grants that we could apply for to help finance our DPW rebuild of buildings. And there was one that did stand out to me, a Department of Housing and Urban Development's Community Development Block Grant Program. And the person in their office, Joe was his name, is an expert in this grant, and so we're setting up a Zoom meeting between Kevin and Kyle and Shirley and Megan and I and anybody else that might be interested and able to come. I'm sure it will be a weekday daytime Zoom meeting, but if you want to be included, at least know when it is so you can be there, just let me know, and I'll include you in the email for that. He was gonna, Jeremy was gonna get with Joe. Let me know what we can do as far as setting that up. So we'll see. That might be a good source of money. Right now, our donations stand at just about $31,000. Any questions about that? Okay, the other thing, and this is what I started to say to you, Jacob, and I'm sorry I didn't finish my sentence. There is a Consumers Energy Foundation Pitch, P-I-T-C-H, competition, and they are now opening up the applications for that. We did apply for this grant last year, and we're, we didn't get it. They applied for something for the parks. But I did... But I did submit for the city of Perry for this grant today. They will consider it based on, it's called Put Your Community on the Map, Put Your Town on the Map. It's for communities of less than 10,000 people. It's to be used for downtowns, store vacancies, attracting visitors, social, education, employment, place making, tourism, youth community engagement, community pride, unifying or strengthening the community, business acceleration, retention, attraction. And that's kind of what I aimed at, because when I said to you last meeting, we need to remember that we have a downtown at Lansing Road, too. That is so dark out there, especially this time of year, it gets dark so early. And when it's cloudy, it's dark all day. But it's so expensive to put streetlights along there. But what I applied for was this money to help us start looking at getting grants of other kinds to do streetlights out there. So they do respond by March, and then you have to, March 8th, and then you have to do a video or PowerPoint presentation, April 12th, to see if you apply or are awarded. First place is $25,000, second is $15,000, and third is $10,000. So, I mean, it certainly isn't gonna pay for $150,000 worth of lights, but it might jumpstart. And they do want projects that are not underway already. They want them just in the beginning stages, so. So I did send that in, just so you know.
Is that something you can email or share?
Yes, I can forward you the email, but I'll share this with you, too.
Sure.
Would you hand that to Jacob? Kevin asked me just to share with all of you about the gutters, that whole color situation that happened. The company that put the wrong color gutters over here has said that they would do the same color, they put new on this side, over on this side, and that the city would only have to pay $3,000 for that. So then we'd have new gutters on both sides that are the same color. Now, I don't expect you to decide tonight if that's what you want to do, but I just want you to be aware that that's what they've said. For a cost to the city of $3,000, they will install the gutters that match over here. It is more expensive on this side because it's three stories up instead of two stories Kevin did say that, they did not say what they would do if we don't want to do that. If we want them to take this down and make it match like he ordered it, they did not say what they would do in regard to that request. So he'll have more information for us at the February 1st meeting, but he just wanted you to be aware of what he knew so far. And Bob Porter made the paper.
Yes, I called him. I called him.
Yawas Oargus did a nice little article about our sleds, our sled library.
That's a little picture, too, because they don't put it there anymore.
She had called and talked to Megan about it, and Megan put her in touch with Bob because he originated this, and thank you again for that. We see kids out there all the time.
Yeah, and they're leaving their sleds everywhere.
They are.
Pick up your sleds. You follow the directions.
It does say that right on the side, and then I saw the.
Or you can put it back.
The neighbor right next to that had a thing on Facebook.
Yes, I saw that, too.
Asking, I thought rather politely, to please put the sleds back when they're done, because they have to go out there all the time and pick them up. And it's nice of them to do that, but our DP, Dugger guys do do that, too. If they see them out there, they go pick them up, but they should put that. So that's everything I had. Do you have any questions about any of those items? If not, we'll move to committee reports. Personnel Committee, you'll go first?
Sure. The Personnel Committee met on January 8th to discuss the possibility of a raise for DPW Superintendent Kevin Tyler. Superintendent Tyler recently completed his certification to become an L-2, L-1 municipal wastewater plant operator. Upon his hiring, there was discussion of a 50 cent per hour raise attached to this certification. Based on his excellent service as DPW Superintendent and obtaining this certification, the Personnel Committee therefore recommends approving this 50 cent an hour raise. Though not present, Councilman Fuller has previously voiced his approval on this action.
Thank you, Mike. Do you have any questions for Mike or any discussion about that? It is under new business for us to discuss approving that, but if you have any questions, now would be the time to pose those to our Chairman of the Personnel Committee.
And just to follow background on it, this was a certification that he had a good years' experience here before he was eligible to even test for it, something he was missing coming from a smaller municipality before he got here. So it took quite a bit of schooling, quite a bit of work for him to get it done, so.
Yeah, it's a tough test.
Yep, yep. So he did well, he got it, and we're looking to give him the raise for it.
Thank you very much. Other committees, Ordinance Committee, do you have anything?
No, other, we had a good, good meeting, and we will have a few items that will be brought forward for a little bit more discussion at our next meeting, but we have probably hit the high points already with a number of ordinance revisions that have been here previously, but we've got a couple of lighter enhancements that we are in the process of working on, so.
Yes. We did have a cleanup at the house that's been an ordinance issue, a nuisance issue that was a city court ordered city cleanup of a property down on the east end of Second Street, and that was done yesterday. Parks, anything from Parks you want to?
I just, kind of how what Megan mentioned is, you know, really, we're gonna brainstorm on the 29th about what I brought up at the beginning of the year about beautification, talking a little bit about, you know, we would like to start, what would be optimal, and how we can kind of gain momentum with the community there. And then with what you just proposed to me or presented to me, I'm looking at that and some more stuff before that meeting, so.
Very good. If we are told that we can present in that, because they kind of whittle it down to, then you represent, if you do present.
Yeah.
Then it has to be a video, it has to be, so.
I'm good at that.
Yeah, I thought that would be right of your alley, so there we are.
I can do that for a living.
Yeah. Any questions for any committees represented here? If not, we'll move on to presentation and approval of the bills.
And we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have no old business, so we'll move into new business. And we have the business owners for the site plan that was presented to the Planning Commission and approved by the Planning Commission, but the Liskeys, John and Roy, are here to tell us about it so that council knows what has been approved. So come forward and show us what you got.
I figured a picture's worth a thousand words, so. This is a rendering of what we are proposing. Let's see. Can you get it? It's hard, so everybody can see, but you can see where the Burger King is. It's essentially, the building goes where the, it looks like a park and ride lot is. And we submitted the plans, we met with Leland Scott a couple of times, and the only change to the original plans were the fire department wanted a wider entry into, into our areas. So the way it would work was, we have an easement from both M-52 and Lansing Road, and then, and then there's a 24-foot wide entryway into this lot back, back here. So off of M-52, and then right along the edge of the space between Burger King and Lions Den, there's a right-of-way entry there. And so that's where the two entries are. Our general contractor is Lindman Construction, Keith Pinkelman, and they are local. Their offices are just, just outside the city limits on Lansing Road.
Just down by the, the childcare.
Yes.
Yeah.
And he could not be here tonight because his daughter's birthday party, so if you have any technical questions, Roy and I'll do our best.
Right now, as it currently stands, that entrance right there is a one-way.
That is correct.
How did that go about changing?
No, it's still one-way.
Okay.
It will be only one-way.
Okay.
You'll have to exit on Lansing Road.
Okay, because I see a stop sign, that's why I'm wondering, this is, or is that not a different? It's.
All right. No, that's just a directional. That's like a directional sign.
Okay, okay, I thought I saw a stop sign. All right, good.
It's, it's, right, so it will remain one-way.
Okay, thank you.
This shop, I think it's one-way in, and then do your shopping, and then.
What is your construction time, when you guys plan to start?
Well, it's been two years to get to this point.
Right, right.
And the council here, I think it may have been your first meeting, gave us an extension out of our license through December of next year, actually.
Yeah.
We would like to get started this spring or summer, but I'm telling you, we'll be lucky if we get started by fall. I, I just can't get too invested in a timetable because I've been disappointed so often.
Sure, sure.
Any other questions for John or Roy?
No, it looks nice.
We're gonna do quite, but if you've seen our store in Langsberg, we're gonna do a lot of landscaping right around the building.
Yeah, that's what she was saying. That's awesome.
I brought up something to Larry, just, I used to be on the Planning Commission, but you have it right here in the notes, landscape calculation of one street tree. It's just not shown on the plan.
We're not proposing any trees.
I wouldn't put any across there, but there should be some.
There are 60 trees on the property already.
Correct, but it's our ordinance says you need to plant some more.
Well, if you'd like us to, we will, but the.
I wouldn't put any across the front because of the, your sightlines, but I'm sure you can find us about the, a couple.
Yeah.
That's all. That's what I do for a living, not that I want to sell you any trees, but I'm, I'm a tree hugger from way back, so.
The, the other place we, we looked, thought about putting trees or any landscaping was the dividing line between Burger King and, and our property.
But the fire department didn't want that.
They didn't want, and we, talking with Keith Pinkelman, he said during snow plowing and salts and everything, nothing's.
They'll just get run over, yeah. I was just saying, this spot, like, you're gonna, you have one here, keep that, but you have some back here, so I'm sure you can.
We'll find a place.
Find a couple spots.
I think it's just a matter, my point had up to me, and we missed it when we talked to the Planning Commission, but that we look and see, it complies with the ordinance, where could we mutually agree that we could get a couple of trees in, maybe to the east side of the building? I know there's trees back there that you're gonna shield with some protection that are already there, but what else we potentially could do? We've got plenty of time to sort through that.
Yep.
Any discussion, questions?
Just wanted to say this is awesome, you guys built a new building in Perry.
Yeah.
That's great.
We're really looking forward to seeing it go up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing the picture.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item under new business, discussion regarding our COPS grant, the security upgrade, and we did have a department had a meeting last week, and.
Monday.
Oh, that's Monday, just, just five days ago.
Oh, that's Monday.
And this is in process, but there's no new news yet. Kevin and Kyle have been going over things and trying to see if we need to eliminate anything to fit within what we have money-wise. And so they're just, it's in process, so they will bring more information as they have it. And now we're to the resolution regarding personnel's recommendation for the pay increase.
I move that we approve the following resolution. Whereas the city hired Kevin Tyler as DPW Superintendent on October 3rd, 2022, whereas the city made an exception upon hiring that Kevin Tyler had one year to obtain his L-2, L-1 municipal wastewater treatment plant operator certification. And whereas, as a result, on December 8th, 2024, Kevin Tyler completed his certification to obtain his L-2, L-1 municipal wastewater treatment plant operator certification. Therefore, it is resolved that Kevin Tyler shall receive a 50 cent per hour raise effective January 18th, 2024. Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Is this appropriate after the fact, though? The, I think I should say December 8th, 2023.
Oh, yes.
You're making a red throw?
The third, where it is.
Just a tickle.
Just a tickle.
Oh, up here.
Do you want to just amend, and we'll read out based on that correction?
Sure, friendly amendment that we just amend that, whereas a result, on December 8th, 2023, if everybody's okay with that.
Yes.
Yep.
All those in favor of that motion with the change, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Larry. Your detailed mind, always fine stuff. We appreciate that. The next item under new business, discuss M-52 property. We're not gonna have anything to discuss because I haven't been able to get hold of our buyers who are out of town, so we're hoping they'll be back next month, and then we can move ahead. So I've asked John Souter to watch for anybody to be down there and stop. And he said he would, so that'll work. Number five, then, under new business, we're gonna turn over to Shirley.
Okay, so I just wanted to kind of throw out there the council seats that are up for reelection. Larry's seat's up for reelection, Bob's seat's up for reelection, Jacob's seat will be up for reelection. Those will be four-year terms, so there will be three four-year terms that are available. Kina's seat is going to be a two-year term, it's gonna be a partial, because her original seat, if I say that right, is supposed to expire 2026. So originally, that seat was 2026, but because of the appointment, it expires December 2024. Or, I'm sorry.
It expires election.
December 20, yeah, yeah.
Correct.
2024, yes. So that will be a partial seat, and then we'll have a mayor seat available, two-year term.
We will.
Um, petitions, I did find those, so I, or, yeah, nominating petitions, I think they're called. I do have those upstairs along with the affidavit of identity, and if anyone's interested, I, I don't know if it's too soon to come get those yet, I'm still kind of working out those details, but I do know they're due April 23rd by 4:00 p.m. So I just don't.
That's the day we'd have to put them on the ballot or run again.
In our office by the 23rd, and I would have to have those to the Clerk's Office in Corona on Monday, the 29th, so. So, or the 26th, I'm sorry.
But they'd have to be turned into
They have to, I have to have them by the 23rd, yes.
And there's not a lot of signatures that are required.
No, it's a 15, at least 15. I think 30 was the most. I think that was the red, I read the 30 was the most. You cannot sign the petition until it's suggested not to sign it until you bring it in and we make sure everything's good. If it's dated, like, after a signature on your petition, it like voids it out, so.
The only reason to get more than 15 is just to be on the safe side in case you have somebody who signs it who's not a registered voter. Then you've got enough to still meet the 15.
I think the max number that you can have on there regardless is 30, I believe.
I think that's all the slots they give you. I know Devin told me to get like 18 or 19 when I did it the first time. Just for that reason, in case somebody was disqualified.
Any questions for Shirley about that?
I don't know if I can answer them, but but I'm going to, on Monday, I'm going to go to the county for some, a little bit of training. And then also on the 25th, which is next Thursday, I'll be going back to the county for some more training. And hopefully, I'll be able to get the preliminary testing done and I can start getting ballots out, so.
If there's anything that any of us can do to help, let us know.
Right, okay.
We are here to support.
Yes, thank you.
Any other business that may come before council at this time? John?
I didn't know if you were planning on approving our safety.
We don't have to approve it. It is been approved by the Planning Commission, and the buck stops there.
I understand.
But we really appreciate you bringing us the information.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll draft a letter, and then Bob Aki will have to sign it, and we'll mail it out to you, see if it's approved.
All right, thank you, thanks.
Thanks for asking, though, John. I forgot that it was on there. We have been discussing that for like three days, trying to be safe. And we came to the conclusion that Planning Commission has the authority to approve the plans. The council does not also approve it. It's approved by Planning Commission, and that's what it takes.
All right, thank you.
So a letter will be sent out to you.
Quite honestly, we don't do that many that frequently. So we were a little confused with the Planning Commission. And at that time, when we were there with the meeting in terms of what the next steps were. So we erred on the side of being sure, but it went into not a requirement, so.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Agenda items for our next meeting. One would be the gutter issue. And then we'll wait to hear from Kyle and Kevin as to whether or not they have any information regarding the security system. Anyone else know of anything else that needs to be on the agenda for the next meeting? Then I guess we are now adjourned. Boy, this is a long meeting compared to last week. 7:52, we're adjourned. Try my mop.